Good evening, folks. Welcome to the City of Lowell zoning board appeals public hearing for September 9th. Just a few reminders. If you have a cellphone or electronic device, if you can please turn it off or put on silence so it doesn't disrupt the meeting, it would be appreciated. Under continued business, we have none. We're going to take one item out of order here. ZBA-2024-33. The petition is a variance. Applicant is 505 Capital Partners LLC, property located at 3840 Swift Street. 505 Capital Partners LLC has been, has applied to Lowell zoning board appeals to construct a new two-family home at 3840 Swift Street. After the lot is split, the subject property is located in traditional two-family zoning district and currently a two-family home. Lot 1, the existing two-family requires variance approval from the zoning board of appeals per section 5.1, form them lot area per dwelling unit. Minimum lot frontage, minimum front yard setback, minimum side yard setback, minimum rear yard setback, per section 6.110 for maximum curb cut, and any other relief required in the Lowell zoning ordinance. Lot 2, the newly proposed lot in two-family requires variance approval under section 5.1 for the minimum lot area per dwelling unit, minimum lot frontage, and any other relief required in the Lowell zoning ordinance. I believe the applicant is on Zoom.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Kenneth Lanier, Cornerstone Land Associates, representing the applicant, Capital 505 Capital Partners. We're here this evening, Mr. Chairman, to request the variance is outlined in your original statement for the lot. As you may recall, we did appear before the board and work with the board very closely to define the appropriate conditions to allow for this variance application for lots 1 and 2 to be approved. And in doing so, we then moved forward with the A&R subdivision with the Lowell Planning Board. As you know, Mr. Chairman, the variance requests and approvals have been ultimately only provided six months of time upon an action of a building permit after the approval. Ultimately, we were unable to secure the planning board approval for the A&R within that six-month period of time. I was under the impression, mistakenly so, that the A&R subdivision would be an act upon the variance to allow that to stay in existence with the property. But as it turns out, only a building permit freezes the variance approval. So I would like to upfront apologize for wasting any of the board's time this evening. But ultimately, we're hoping that the board would look kindly upon the application as it did on the original approval and allow us to receive the variance approvals again and move forward with the construction of the dwelling as outlined on the plans and the application. I'd be glad to answer any questions at this time.
Okay. Then thank you, Mr. Lanier. We're going to open the hearing to the public now. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? All right. Again, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition. Seeing that portion of the public hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In favor, seeing none. We're going to open questions here into the board. The chair recognizes Mr. Procop. Mr. Procop, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Lanier, it's unfortunate that you couldn't, you know, seal the final requirements. But, I mean, I think that just based on, you know, what you appeared before, and I think it's a, it's a good plan. There was one thing that I, I wanted some clarification on, and that was regarding the curb cuts that was discussed with Lot 2. It's unclear that there are two 15-foot curb cuts to access the garage at each unit. Can you verify the curb cut measurements?
Yes, that is correct, Mr. Procop.
Okay. It is 15 feet?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. I mean, just looking at the area, I've gone there many times, as you have brought this, you know, before the board, and it, it does, in my opinion, you know, meet some type of hardship. It's tight in, in there, and I don't think that this project does any harm to the neighborhood. It's actually conducive to what the neighborhood looks like. So I, unless my fellow members, you know, may disagree, but I think that this would be a good project. So I'll be in favor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Procop. The chair recognizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've consistently voted for construction on these lots of a smaller type so long as though the neighborhood character is not significantly altered and that the lot sizes proposed are consistent with the neighborhood. And I believe in both cases, that is what's happening here, and as a result, favor the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I look favorably on this application also. And I think since this one has come before us, we've had the Lowell Forward Plan, and the comments from the Planning and Development Department, Peter Crumbus, C-trumbus, sorry, stated that this is part of that missing middle of the housing stock that we need to so badly build. And this is, these are smaller units that would provide housing for that stock. So I especially think that we need this type of housing. I would like to see a shade tree on Swift Street, and I believe that was a condition last time as well. And it's not on the plan right now, so I'd like to make a condition to add a shade tree. There is green space in front of the units, so one shade tree to be placed on Swift Street, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair recognizes the vice chairman, Mr. Callahan. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with my fellow board members. This will fit in well with the neighborhood. The neighborhood's, I know, compact. It's got several multifamily homes, but don't, it doesn't seem to be an issue, or I don't think it'll be an issue of impacting the neighborhood significantly if we can grant relief on these. And I think they'll fit in very nicely, so I would be in favor of this. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. The chair recognizes Mr. Havi. Mr. Havi, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Neighborhoods like this concern me a little bit with the density of the neighborhood. This project, though, we're, we're looking for some relief on lot size, not a lot. And one of the big issues is parking. This addresses both Lot 1 and Lot 2 with off-street parking. So while we'd like to keep that open space, we do need new housing, and I don't think this is a detriment to the neighborhood, so I'd be in favor of this.
Thank you, Mr. Havi. Mr. Lanier, I do believe that this is an appropriate project for this neighborhood. I do think you need a lot of relief, but I think the good always, any, any judgment to the neighborhood and to the city. So I'll be voting in favor. Are you okay with the condition we talked about, the one shade tree, sir?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. We, we are comfortable with the one shade tree. We'll, we'll look into that and coordinate with DBD as to the type of tree that they would recommend we place in that particular lot.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Lanier. All right. If there's no further comments by my colleagues, Mr. McCarthy, go ahead, sir.
I forgot to mention that I just think that the relief is significant, but we're really talking about minimum lot frontage and minimum lot area per dwelling unit primarily for Lot 2 and Lot 1. Lot 1 includes minimum side yard setback, minimum, maximum curb cut, and minimum front yard setback, largely because the existing structure that's there has that condition. So that's not new construction, that's just acknowledging the fact that the existing structure has those requirements for us to approve tonight. So, in my opinion, it really is the lot area per dwelling unit and lot, and lot frontage that we're approving.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Any other comments by my colleagues? All right. Seeing none, can we motion, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for, why does it say that? ZBA 2024-33 for 3840 Swift Street for Lot 1 for minimum lot area per dwelling unit, minimum lot frontage, minimum front yard setback, minimum side yard setback, maximum curb cut, and Lot 2 for minimum lot area per dwelling unit and minimum lot frontage with the condition that the applicant will add a shade tree along Swift Street in front of Lot 2.
All right. Motion by Mr. McCarthy.
Second.
Second by Mr. Procop. Can we roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve the condition.
Member Callahan.
Approve the condition.
Member McCarthy.
Approve the condition.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Procop.
Approve the condition.
Member Havi.
Approve.
All right, Mr. Lanier, you've been approved. Wish you best of luck, good luck on your flight tonight.
Again, I appreciate, yes, absolutely, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate your time, and thank you for letting us move forward with this project. You guys have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, we have ZBA-2024-34. The petition is a special permit. The applicant has viewpoint signs and awning, property located at 100 Trump Street. Viewpoint signs and awning is applied to Lowell zoning board of appeals, seeking a special permit approval to erect an eternity illuminated signage at 100 Trump Street. The subject property is located in the high-rise commercial HRC zoning district. The proposal requires special permit approval per section 6.3 for eternity illuminated signage and for any other relief required in the Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'm the facility manager at the site. The variance is for, we have a sign, unfortunately, our chief stockholder died last year. This is to dedicate the campus to his memory. The sign was, is totally enclosed within the campus of the site. It's not visible from Chelmsford Street. It's blocked by the building. It adds security for our staff, particularly female staff, leaving the building at night by illuminating it, adds more light. We would just like to take the opportunity to illuminate the site, to make it clearer, the sign, to make it clearer that the site is dedicated to the memory of John, who spent a lot of money improving the site and putting some money into the city by creating some good jobs.
Okay. Thank you for that summary of the projects, sir. If you have no further comments, we'll open the hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? All right. Seeing that portion of the public hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In favor? Seeing that the public hearings close, we're going to open questions, comments to the board. The chair recognizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank MACOM for their investment they've made on that site. It's a tremendous asset for the city, and it really is beautiful seeing that when you come in on the train. It's just a welcoming kind of site, and you've done a great job maintaining that campus.
Thank you.
I think that the request is very minor, and I look forward to looking favorably on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair recognizes the vice chairman, Mr. Callahan. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No real questions or concerns. It seems pretty straightforward. DBD doesn't have any concerns, and I don't, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. The chair recognizes Mr. Havi. Mr. Havi, the floor is yours, sir.
I have no questions.
Thank you, Mr. Havi. The chair recognizes Mr. Procop. Mr. Procop, the floor is yours, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any concerns. I echo Member McCarthy's comments that this company has done a great deal for the city, so we appreciate the work you do, and I'm voting in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Procop. This makes sense to me. I think it's a nice upgrade, so congratulations on the sign. I think it looks, it's going to be a win for that area and for your business. All right. If there's no further comments, can we motion, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2024-34 for a special permit for an illuminated sign at 100 Trump Street.
All right. There's a motion by Mr. McCarthy.
Second.
Second by Mr. Procop. Can we roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve.
Member Callahan.
Approve.
Member McCarthy.
Approve.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Procop.
Approve.
Member Havi.
Approve.
All right. You've been approved. Wish you best of luck, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out this evening. All right. Moving on to our next item on the agenda, new business, we have ZBA-2024-35. The petition is a variance and special permit. The applicant is Foster Ephesoe, apologize for that, property located at 430 Hildreth Street. The applicant has applied to Lowell zoning board of appeals to convert the existing garage into an additional residential unit. The subject property is located in the suburban multifamily SFM zoning district. The proposal requires variance approval from the zoning board of appeals per section 5.1 for minimum lot area per dwelling unit and minimum usable open space per dwelling unit, a special permit under section 12.1B for two dwelling units on one lot, and any other relief required in the Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. My name is Ushman Dafshar from Tides Engineering from here in Lowell. The applicant was told that this, this is a single-family house located at, this is a house, this is a, I guess that can need more living space, so it's proposing to encourage three hundred yards to a living space of bedrooms and bathrooms, small kitchen and living area. The access to the, mainly access to the existing house, to remove from Hildreth Street. However, they have the access easement from Old Hildreth Street that goes directly to the garage. Traditionally, they have been parking on this driveway here, I think three or four cars have been parked here, which can be updated for this existing house. And you're proposing two parking spaces for the additional dwelling. The entrance would be to access it from the links. The existing front, basically view of the garage is going to change to what's proposed here. Imagine the existing brick texture, which is out there and right now, removing the doors, of course, and putting an exterior, maybe, and the windows, which is further out, could be used as a base in case of emergency. So this is a left, essentially view of existing, and this is again, proposed elevation view, the two windows, and then again, the same, the same existing brick texture, and this is the rear, existing, and this is the rear. I also have a photograph of what is, what's out there right now. This is the view of the house, the existing house from Hildreth, and this is the view of the house and the garage, which is proposed to be hundred feet into a living space on Old Hildreth Street. With that, if there's any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer if I can. Couple of hours ago, I just received an email with some new comments, which I didn't even get a chance to read it thoroughly, but of course, we can discuss.
Okay. Thank you, sir, for the summary of the project. We're going to open questions to the hearing to the public now. Anyone who wants to speak in opposition to this project? Yeah? Yeah? You want to come to the lectern and just state your name and address, sir? You just stop talking to the microphone, ma'am? Yeah? Just for the public record? Thank you.
My name is Cynthia Kane, and I live at 146 Orleans Street, which abuts this garage that they want to change into a house. I have a lot written, but back in 2004, my brother, my mom, my uncle, and I owned 146, and we signed an easement with the owner of that property. The easement states that they have access to our lot to maintain the garage, not to do anything else on it. It also states that upon division into those two lots, 1 and 2, that exist, neither of the two new lots will be used for any use more intrusive than a two-family dwelling. To the best of my understanding, 430 is a two-family dwelling, and the house on Orleans Street at 158 and 160 are both also a two-family. So that would make this, to my mind, not allowable. If you renovate it, it would require workers to come onto our property in order to get to the side of the garage, because it's literally right on the property line. The easement also stated that they cannot do any work that would directly interfere with the use of our property, which includes enjoyment of the yard, our privacy, our dogs being outside. It would destroy all of the greenery, and it would interfere. It's also stating that there's sufficient place for parking. I disagree. While they may be parking for a couple of cars, the occupants on 460 have frequently parked in the ends of Orleans Street. There's also a two-family dwelling on Hildreth Street. They also park there. So they line both sides of the streets with cars, and I don't believe a fire truck would get down there if they tried. It's noted that Centerville is already a congested community, and I get it, but I don't think putting 26, 25 square foot, where you're supposed to have 10,000 feet, is, is the right way to go. I just ask you, please, consider the variance that we have signed back in 20, back in 2004 to leave it no more than two, two-family on each site. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? Yeah? Good evening.
Vincent Hayhurst. I own 416, 414, Hildreth Street. Now, this lot that this, they want to convert, they've been using it as a garage for being paid to repair things for the last few years. And now they want to put a house in there? I don't know. Hey, let me ask you a question. What's the, what's the abutters? Isn't that 300 feet? Is that the criteria of the abutter list?
The abutter list criteria is direct abutters and abutters to those abutters.
Well, I'm like a house, one house away. I'm probably within 100 feet of them, and I never got any notice. I was told this by accident, probably, but I'm opposed to it. I have a two-family there. Had it for years, 30 years, maybe. I got a garage there. If he can put his, make it into another apartment, I want mine, too. I'll, I'll turn my garage into an apartment. All right? I'm opposed. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your comments, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Good evening.
Hi. Good evening. Donna Judson, 149 Orleans Street. I'm opposed due to concerned with all the traffic, because with another residence, there's talking four bedrooms. I heard that it was supposed to be family moving in there, but who knows how long they would live there, whether it would be three weeks, three months, three years, whatever. You're talking more cars, more traffic. The street is already congested as it is. If they have visitors come over, you're talking more traffic. It's a very busy street. If they park on Orleans Street, which they're gonna, because I already know they're not going to be parking on Hildreth Street. Hildreth is also very busy, where there's already a lot of accidents, unfortunately, that occur there. Everybody cuts down Orleans Street, unfortunately, and there's school buses that are constantly going down there. If you've got more traffic, more cars parking there, the fire engines won't be able to get down, school buses won't be able to get down. People don't pay attention whether they're parking on the left side of the street, the right side of the street, where they're parking. And there's already this, this house that lives over there, they keep their trash out way longer than they're supposed to, which I know they're already breaking audiences with all that. More people living there, there's going to be more trash, so I'm concerned about all that. I just want to say I'm opposed. My husband, Jeff, is over there, too. He's opposed.
Okay. Thank, thank you for your comments, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to this petition? Good evening, sir.
My name is David Nicolow. I live at 119 Orleans Street. I've lived there for 17 years. I can honestly tell you that cars are parked from the corner of Hildreth Street right up Orleans Street, in front of my house, in front of my neighbor's house, and people fly up and down our street. It's very congested over there, and my vote is no. Plain and simple.
Okay. Thank, thank you for your comments, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition of this petition? In opposition? In opposition? All right. Seeing that portion of the public hearing is closed, anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In favor? All right. Seeing none, probably going to close, we're going to open questions, comments to the board. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions regarding the zoning diagram that you put together on the site plan. The document that you provided has a first list maximum FAR of .75, and you're suggesting the proposed FAR stays the same as the existing. But when I do the math, it looks like the proposed is going to be going over the FAR of .75. I'm not quite sure why that number is so low. If I do the math, you're at roughly 3,974 square feet when you add in the square footage of the existing two-family and the existing garage. So that gives us an FAR of .76. Anyway, that's one thing that I'd like to see corrected, but if we can continue down, the minimum lot area per dwelling unit you state required is 10,000 square feet existing. You list as 2,634 square feet, which is just a two-family. So you're asking for a three-family on this lot. So, just to be clear, the existing structure was purchased, I think, last year. You can go on Zillow and see the listing that calls out a two-family, and it has two kitchens, multiple bedrooms, finished space in the basement, finished bedrooms in the third floor. If anyone thinks that existing house is not a two-family, I'm surprised, because tax is a two-family, so they're paying for taxes as a two-family, and it's got two separate electric services. So, in my eyes, that's a two-family. And no, no effort was made to change it to a single-family, in my eyes. So we're looking at an application here for a three-family. So this chart that you have in front of us doesn't address a three-family. There's a lot of errors, and I just want to make sure that everyone on the board recognizes the relief. If you correct these numbers- if you correct these numbers, as a three-family would entail. The proposed relief, so, so the minimum lot area per dwelling unit, you state that existing is 2,600, which is quite a bit under the 10,000 required for zoning, and the proposed would be 1,745. So the lot area per dwelling unit would be 80-something percent less than what's required by zoning. Significant relief sought, for sure. Significant relief sought, actually, for minimum lot size. It's over 15,000, well, about 15,000 square feet of relief sought for minimum lot size. You have that listed as existing non-conforming, but the existing non-conforming element is a garage. You're asking for the garage to change use from a garage to a residence, and in my opinion, that's not complying with existing non-conforming. You're asking for relief for that garage structure setbacks included. So there's a lot of relief you're asking for, especially when we talk about this is a three-family. Minimum side yard setback, like I said, for that garage going to a residence, it's a zero, if not worse. I think the site plan actually shows that part of the structure is on the adjacent property. At least, that's how you depicted on the graphic. So you don't meet the side yard or the rear setback at all. You're not providing any setback for this residential structure. I've never seen that in front of me in all the years I've been here, that someone would come to the board meeting with a proposal where you don't provide any setback. I'm just shocked. And then also, I think that we're talking about usable open space. Your numbers don't reflect accurately what the usable open space is. And then you actually said that you think that there's four cars parked in that existing driveway coming off of Hildreth Street. I think I heard you say that. Is that correct?
Well, in tandem, I guess two, three cars can fit in there. That's what, that's what I had been told.
The length of it is about 49 feet. So a parking space in the city is eight by 18. So that's 36. You can't get a third car unless you're...
Two cars in tandem can fit.
Two cars. Okay. So you're, you're looking for relief for cars. You're looking for a relief for two parking spaces.
The issue of the existing house being a two-family, even when we got the certified abutters list from tax office, we were not told. It just, like I said, we just got an email two hours ago.
I, I, I don't understand how the owner, who bought it maybe a year ago for $510,000, listed as a two-family and is paying taxes on a two-family and has two electric services, doesn't know he has a two-family. I don't understand. There's two kitchens.
At least we were not told. Not until he was told he should apply. I was surprised myself.
I think it is a two-family for anyone who wants to see it as a two-family. And it's, it's taxed in the city and accepted by the city as a two-family.
And no one told us. That's all I'm saying.
He was told when he bought the house that he was buying a two-family. By the real estate. At least, that's what's online.
That's correct. I mean, but I'm talking about me, not him.
Okay. Anyway, we're looking at relief for parking as well.
Correct.
So we're looking for you to allow two people, two, two spaces on the street. And then I think of the number of rooms that I saw in that house. There's finished rooms in the basement that could be used as bedrooms. There's finished rooms in the third floor that could be used as bedrooms. And now you're proposing a four-bedroom apartment in the garage, which kind of says maybe more than two spaces would be realistic for the board members to entertain for the use in this. So relief for two spaces on the street plus, you know, it might be six spaces we're looking for additional cars on the street. I can't support this. I can't support this. I am disappointed that the application is not accurate with what you're telling the board. I had to do the digging to find the mistakes on this document. But you're asking for 15,000 square foot of lot size relief. And you have zero setback. I've never seen a relief request like this. I'm just shocked. I'm sorry, but I can't, I can't, I can't.
That's okay, Mr. McCarthy. I can say only one thing, that, um, I think the applicant was told, not by me, was told that he has a chance and he should apply. He should go to spend time and money and apply. He, he was told by us that this is a very tough argument to sell, but he said he was told that he has a chance, so...
I, I don't think people have the right to stop an applicant from making an application, so...
That's true. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair organizes the vice chairman, Ms. Callahan. The floor is yours, sir.
Uh, thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. I mean, I'm baffled. I'm baffled by this. And I understand you say the applicant was possibly told something. I don't know what kind of advice they got, but it was bad advice, bad advice. You, you could have done a clear title. I did a clear title search on this when I saw that there was an easement involved. And these, it goes back to when they bought it, and it was like three purchases back. There was an easement, not only an easement granted, but at one point, whoever owned the property came in front of this board, along with the neighbors over at, um, over on the corner of Orleans Street, and had that easement put in, had that, had that broken out, and the lots. And in that ruling, there's clearly, as part of the ruling, there's a copy of the, the site plan that shows each one says existing two-and-a-half-story, two-unit dwelling on each of them, on 430 Hildreth and on Orleans, on 146 Orleans Street. And just going through the whole easement part of it, there's also, and none of knowledge there an easement, there's a declaration of restriction on this. As one of the, uh, the abutters who opposed it, clearly state, and this is, this is a clear declaration from the owner at the time. This is in 2004, 430 Hildreth Street. And I'm just paraphrasing it, that upon division of the lots into two lots, as shown on the Board of Appeals Plan for 430 Hildreth Street, dated 12/28/2003, to be recorded here with, neither of the two new lots will be used for any more intrusive use than a two-family dwelling. So this, I don't think we have the power to do anything on this. There's a restriction on this deed. There's a restriction on this, on this property. I don't, I mean, on top of it, and this is, this is to the neighbor's benefit, I guess, if relief is granted, which I'm, I'm, listen, I'm not in support of, based on, I don't think we have the power to do it. I'm not in support of it. But even if the relief is granted, there's a portion of this on the restriction. It also says, should the existing garage that's in the subject easement be removed? And I'm reading removed as converted into something else, an apartment or whatever. The garage is gone. The owners of 430 Hildreth Street shall extend the fence existing between the properties at 146 Orleans and 430 Hildreth Street to the end of the lot. Which means that's cut off. The, the whole lot is back to, back to 146 Orleans Street. The easement is gone. It's cut off, and now you have zero parking, zero, nothing. So I don't know how we're going to get around this, but, um, I don't think we have the power to grant anything based on that restriction. So that's my, that's my two cents on this. I'll listen, I'll listen to my other fellow board members, but, I'm sorry, I just, I just don't see that we have the power to grant anything on this. That's, that's my opinion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Callahan. Uh, the chair organizes, Mr. Havi. Mr. Havi, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. I'll be brief. I don't feel I need to go through point by point on, uh, why I think this should be approved or not approved. I like to be consistent with my decisions. This neighborhood has come before us before. Projects that have asked for less relief have come before us before. And I've always said no because of density and the character of the neighborhood and the intent of zoning. I think this flies in the face of all of them. So in order for me to be consistent, I, I won't support this either. That's all.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Havi. The chair organizes, Mr. Procop. Mr. Procop, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I actually have the same sentiments as my fellow board members. I, I just don't know how an applicant can think that they're purchasing, that they're purchasing a single-family and trying to make this into a two-family. It, it baffles me. Which makes the relief that's being requested, you know, insurmountable, that, you know, there is no way that we can support, well, I can, I can support this. And as Member Callahan mentioned about the easement, I mean, there is nothing we can do. So, you know, in that event, just based on the facts that we see, the numbers does not match, and I am not going to support this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Prokop. Uh, the chair organizes, Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The easement issue and the excessive relief being requested prohibits my support of this petition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. Yeah, I think to me, and even to my colleague's point, if we can get additional housing in the city, it's always a good thing. I, I do think that this is definitely not the appropriate way to, to do that. You know, with, just with the easement and that restriction, that guideline, I think it's hard to do anything with that, and, you know, the, the excessive use of adding another unit on top of two in a very highly dense neighborhood, and then, you know, just aesthetically, it wouldn't fit in either. There's certain requirements for, um, a variance. I don't think you meet those prerequisites, in my opinion. And again, to, to the neighbors and to the abutters in the neighborhoods' point, I think, you know, I think if the owner tried to work with, with the neighbors to try to make something happen, honestly, I think this is just not the right fit. So I won't be supporting either. So those are my, my thoughts and opinion on this petition. But, Mr. McCarthy, did you have another comment, sir?
I, I was wondering if we could support the applicant withdrawing without prejudice, where it may have been, uh, the applicant may have been misled by the idea that this application could have been something that we could entertain, where it was presented as a single-family and clearly is a two-family from the city documentation. I don't know if we would want to support the applicant withdrawing without prejudice, if the applicant would even be interested in doing so.
That's the choice and option for the applicant. It's up to them. You can go that route, or we can, we can vote on the matter as well.
I'm telling you, Mr. Chairman, I didn't understand the proposal. I'm sorry.
So the options are, we vote on the, the petition that we talked about tonight, or like Mr. McCarthy said, the owner, you as representative have the option to withdraw without prejudice?
Is applicant aware of the difference between the two? Maybe the board could explain it, or I could explain it.
Yeah, go ahead.
So if the board votes no on the project, then the applicant would not be able to reapply to the zoning board for a period of two years. But if you withdraw without prejudice, you, um, don't face that restriction. So they're giving you the opportunity to request to withdraw without prejudice, so that, uh, the applicant wouldn't face that two-year restriction.
Thank you, Mrs. Gliano.
The, keeping in mind that, again, we just got an email from the D P D about two hours ago, that this is actually a two-family, I think we would withdraw without any prejudice.
Okay. All right. Any other comments by my colleagues?
I think your client needs to talk to someone about the restrictions on that property. I don't think they can do anything with it, even if you go back to the drawing board, even, even as you're saying that you didn't, you weren't aware that this was a two-family. I don't think anything can be done with it now.
No, I understand.
I mean, there's a restriction on that deed with the easement that says that garage has to stay. So I would suggest that your client speak to somebody about what their options are with that. And then you may have to consult the neighbors, too, if there's something to be done with there. I doubt it, but, I mean, that's, that's my opinion, but, so, thanks.
All right. Any other comments by my colleagues? All right. Seeing none, give a motion, please.
Three, Mr. Chairman, like to make a motion for Z B A 2024-35 for variances in special permit at 430 Hildreth Street to be withdrawn without prejudice.
All right. Motion by Mr. McCarthy to withdraw. Second by the vice chairman. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Uh, approve withdrawal without prejudice.
Member Callahan.
Approve withdrawal without prejudice.
Member McCarthy.
Approve withdrawal without prejudice.
Member Brier.
Provo.
Member Prokop.
Approve withdrawal without prejudice.
Member Havi.
Approve.
All right. The withdrawal has been approved.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Have a good night. Thank you, folks, for coming out this evening. All right. Going on to the next item on the agenda. We have other business. We have minutes for approval for August 12th, 2024. Any comments, edits, revisions from my colleagues for the minutes? Seeing none, give a motion to approve the minutes, please.
Three, Mr. Chairman, like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of 8/12/2024.
Havi.
All right. Motion by Mr. McCarthy to approve the minutes. Second by Mr. Havi. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes are unanimous. All right. We're also, the 2025 meeting schedule, any comments to this? People got it? Any questions to the meeting minutes, schedule, um, meeting schedule for 2025? All right. Seeing none. Can we have a motion to approve the meeting schedule for 2025, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, like to make a motion to approve the 2025 meeting schedule.
All right. Motion by Mr. McCarthy. Second by the vice chairman. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes are unanimous. All right. Now, we have elections of officers. We have all three roles up for election, chairman, vice chairman, and clerk. What is the will of the board here?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a nomination of Van Peck as chairman of the Lowes on Board of Appeals for 2025.
All right. Nomination of Van Peck for chairman of the Lowes on Board of Appeals. Anyone second that?
Second.
All right. Second by...
Somebody.
Second by Mr. Prokop. All right. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, are unanimous. All right. We have the election of officer, vice chairman. I would like to nominate Sean Callahan as vice chairman of the Lowes on Board of Appeals.
Second.
Second, Mr. Havi. All, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes are unanimous. Vice chairman, Callahan. Then I, then we have the, uh, officer clerk. I also like to nominate Dennis McCarthy as clerk to the Lowes on Board of Appeals.
Second.
Second by Mr. Havi. All in favor, say aye.
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 That's unanimous. Congratulations to all the officers. Thank you again, everyone, for your support throughout the year. For myself, I really support it. It's been kind of an up and down year for me personally. But I appreciate you guys, so appreciate the support, confidence. End of the year, as being chair of the board, I continue to still be humble by the position and learn from all you guys every day. So I appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Any other comments by my colleagues and the new officers? All right.
I, I just want to say thank you to my fellow members for supporting me for the clerk role, and I will do my best to attend every meeting, but I will be absent from the next meeting, just so everyone's aware.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy.
Oh, that's it. I'm pulling it back. Just kidding.
All right. Any other further comments?
I appreciate everybody. Thank you for supporting me for vice chair.
Thank, thank, thank you, Mr. Callahan. All right. If there's no further comments, can we have a motion to adjourn, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, like to make a motion to adjourn.
A motion by Mr. McCarthy to adjourn. Second by the vice chairman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Are unanimous. We are adjourned. Thank you. Have a good night, folks. Thank you, have a good night, folks.
[music] Well, that was a weird one, though. And then all the comments.
I...